Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Town of Newcastle Town Board Work Session. The town, the board has been in executive session discussing contracts and personnel. And may I have a motion to open the work session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so today we're going to start off with a discussion on a resolution recommending the Westchester County Board of Legislators renew and reaffirm terminal use agreements of commercial airlines operating at the Westchester County Airport. And to start us with the discussion, we have Greg Elders, a co-chair of the Airport Advisory Board, who will give us the background and recommendations of the intermunicipal task force.
Sure. You can come up here.
Yes.
So yeah, so thank you. Thank you for pointing me to the Newcastle Airport Advisory Committee.
Yeah, thank you for your work.
Yeah, so there's a bunch of us on the committee and then we're part of this broader intermunicipal airport advisory committee made up of seven towns. Rye Brook, Town of Rye, City of Rye, Portchester, Greenwich, North Castle, Newcastle. And yeah, so as part of that, because there's this expiring terminal use agreement at Westchester Airport, which regulates how many flights and how many people can go in and out of the commercial terminals, that expires December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And so what we're doing is this committee, the broader committee, is really trying to put this resolution forward to show our united front to renew that terminal use agreement. And so the idea through this terminal use agreement again is to limit the traffic. Obviously, we all enjoy Westchester Airport, it's convenient, it's close, goes to Florida. At the same time, it can be loud, so it's trying to find that right balance. And so this resolution, just talking about the terminal use agreement and just talk about the terminals, so this does not address the eighty-five percent or so flights, the private jets that go through other fixed base. So this is just the big JetBlue, whatever, commercial airlines. Those are also the loudest planes and so this expires December thirty first. And really, we want Westchester County to renew this agreement. And so it's been effect for base for twenty years, ten years plus five plus five. So we want them to do something similar. So the idea is with this resolution that the seven different towns will pass it. Already, at least three of the towns have approved it. And so the idea is again that we approve this and show that united front that we're concerned, we want this, a new terminal use agreement in place.
So basically, the task force has a number of findings here and you'd like us to endorse them and make a recommendation to the County Board of Legislators.
Correct.
And these municipalities would presumably all sign on to substantially the same the same resolution, making those those recommendations.
Correct. Exactly.
Based on those findings.
Exactly.
Okay. And this pertains to the airline passenger service, which consists of fifteen percent of the actual activity
Correct.
of the traffic in the airport and the other eighty-five percent is controlled by private private use such as the FBOs, the
Fixed space operators.
fixed space operators, which are independent.
Correct, and they have different agreements in place.
Right. Well, I mean, there seems to be a twist to that because some commercial flights do go through the FBOs
Yes.
thereby, you know, evading the the requirements of the
And their separate lawsuits was just one recently, the three of the FBOs lost. And so yeah, so that's
But they lost, okay.
They did, so but that's that's separate, so yeah, this doesn't address that.
When they lose, do they go under the TUAs, under the
So that's, there's a whole separate fight that they have to be part of the terminal.
Terminal use agreements.
And so yes, there's this whole issue of sort of closeted commercial airlines working from the FBOs. And that's that's a separate issue, so these are just, this is just looking at the terminal, like the big terminal where the JetBlues, American Airlines type people go through.
Right, but nevertheless, despite the fifteen percent, which sounds like a small number, these TUAs are considered to play a big role in controlling the airport development, so it's worth taking the time
Exactly, it's also the the bigger airplane.
to pay attention to this.
Exactly.
Right, and so they control things like accommodating accommodating the number of scheduled aircraft that come in at particular intervals of time.
Exactly.
How many takeoffs or landings are allowed, ramp allocations, which affect the number of passengers that go through, so all of those things play a role in in, you know, the level of activity.
Exactly.
That goes that goes on there.
Yeah, so it limits, yeah, the number of flights, the number of people and ultimately number of airplanes, number of the large, larger A three twenty type jets that will take off and land.
So I see here that you're recommending substantially the same agreements that existed.
Correct, they've worked well.
Prior with some some additions.
Yeah. So so the main thing is, right, we'd like another twenty year agreement, so it was a ten year, five year and five year, so something similar, have that long time period. One of the issues is they all expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So since they all expire on the same date, there's the risk that all the airlines could sue Westchester County. And so the idea is if we staggered it, so like you sign on for ten years, it's ten years, another airline comes along, it's their ten years, twenty years, right, so it's not all expiring at the same date to try to avoid that risk. Other issue is extend this period for ninety days where you can't sue back to Westchester Airport, and so the idea is if it expires, you can't just immediately sue, so if there's like this, if you did, you'd have to sort of stop operating for ninety days, which would be a penalty, right, if you lost your operations, just as a way to reduce the lawsuit. And finally, particularly for the municipalities that provide emergency medical services, they would like to get reimbursed for that, which is not Newcastle, but Rye, Rye Brook, City of Rye.
Okay.
Those are the four key pieces of it.
Well, well, it sounds like we definitely want them to maintain these agreements.
Correct.
Otherwise, it'll be a free for all.
Yes.
Basically, so this is very important. I have no problem with this, I think I think it's important, I think you've you've you know, you've explained the terms and the purpose very clearly. I'm just wondering, i- is there anything that you think we should do differently on the resolution?
No.
Based on
Yeah, and again, I mean, to your point before, the status quo has worked, we'd like to keep the status quo and the idea is the seven municipalities are endorsing keeping the status quo, that united front.
Okay, do you know whether any municipality has changed, has, you know, modified this resolution in any way?
So we met a couple of weeks ago and none had changed it.
Okay. All right.
Three or four have passed, at least three have passed and it was all the same.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with it as is, I think it's very thorough and it adds to to what was there before.
Mm-hmm.
It adds some protection, so I I think it's very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Gregory?
I know that airport concerns are top of mind for a lot of our residents. I am so grateful for the work that you and the Airport Advisory are doing. I think it's very important. I'm wondering if we could, you probably will anyway, Vicky, but make mention of this in the supervisor's report or post this somewhere, just because I'm worried that people are gonna miss it because it's August, that's my only
Of course, right, right, it is important.
Yeah. Just wanna make sure the residents know that you guys are doing a wonderful job and that you've asked us to adopt this with seven other municipalities and
Yeah, I mean, it's it's been a really difficult, intractable issue for so many residents
Yep.
and I think it's important for people to know that these TUAs don't address flight paths.
Correct.
including altitude, they also don't address noise and and that's a major concern that we have.
Yes.
So that's rather frustrating for us, but it's important for people to know that and that this is controlled by the FAA. So that's that's the difficulty, so when people, you know, hear about about this and that we're trying to address these, you know, noise issues and traffic issues that we don't have control over, the county doesn't have control over these issues.
Correct.
This is, this seems to me to be one of the ways that we can influence our experiences by making sure that these agreements are maintained in place similarly to the way that they've been structured. So I'm I'm definitely supportive of this. And definitely appreciate that for the time and effort that you, the members in the in a municipal group has put in outlining it so clearly.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you have any sense from the County Board of Legislators whether they are inclined towards these terms? Have you had any discussions with them?
No. Don't don't know anything specific.
Okay.
It might be helpful as well if you can keep an eye on when this gets into the legislator legislatures agenda so that we can, you know, keep tabs on it and other members of the community who maybe may want to comment.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
At county level kind of as well.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great suggestion.
Yeah. Okay, Greg, thank you so much, we really appreciate your work and the work of the entire committee. It's a very hardworking committee and people are very passionate about doing this work, so
Thank you.
we all appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so we'll be voting on this later, later in the meeting, okay. Okay. Next, Rob, we have an authorization to approve the twenty twenty four insurance liability coverage.
Yep, so RJ, oops. RJ is unable to be with us tonight, but I know he usually likes to come when he has good news. Unfortunately, we don't have such great news this time around. So this has to do with our insurance renewal for our liability coverage for the town and I think the board is well aware of some of the large claims we've had over the last several years. You know, dating back, we had the we had the oil spill at the at the pump station up at Horace Greeley. We had the generator up at the water treatment plant blow up and we've had a couple of personal injury settlements that the insurance company has had to take care of over the last couple of years. So while the last couple of years, we've seen the rates increase a little bit, nothing like this year, so you know, unfortunately, one year, two years of bad claims and and, you know, the insurance companies can absorb that getting hired, going beyond that and unfortunately, we have fewer and fewer options. So what happened this year, RJ approached ten insurance companies, rather eleven insurance companies, ten declined to quote. I think nine of them were based on our claims history over the last four years and one of them declined because of the Mickle Dam. They they won't touch us because of that, so they are interested in in our business once the dam comes down, but that is hung up in DEC permitting right now. So the claims history over the last four years, the town has paid two point one million dollars in premiums and the insurance company has paid out three point six million dollars in claims. It's not a winning formula for an insurance company. So unfortunately, our renewal this year comes in at one million two hundred and six thousand seven hundred and thirty seven dollars. That's up from seven hundred and forty five thousand dollars last year. We had budgeted about a twenty percent increase. Would not have expected this increase and and, you know, RJ would say or or did say to me that, you know, the market overall, as you can probably see, the frequency all over the country of storms of of, you know, catastrophic damages that all these companies are having to pay out, unfortunately, adds to the overall rate that everybody's going to pay. So he said we were probably looking at twenty percent regardless of our claims history and the claims history, you know, the numbers don't add up. The the insurance company needs us to have a couple of good years before we can start to see some reductions.
Is there anything you think we can do proactively to set ourselves up for a better rate in years to come?
So these are one-off things, unfortunately, so in response, we we had the oil tank leak up at the pump station, right? So we then went and went around to all our oil tanks and replaced all the underground tanks with above ground and they all have monitoring systems and so we've done that proactively. That was something that happened once. It probably won't happen again based on what we did. The generator, you know, that was a thirty-year-old generator, still in good shape. We maintained it every year as we should have. It was a freak accident, we even had the insurance company came out and said, we did everything right, it just broke down. So, you know, it was still within its useful life, which is why we had, you know, some insurance payout on that, but unfortunately, that broke down and and you always are gonna have the unfortunate accidents that are some of the personal injury type things. And
I mean, this must be something other municipalities face as well.
It absolutely is, so I asked RJ what happens and and so our rate went up, our coverage stayed the same, which is good. So, you know, I asked RJ, what happens? There's gotta be municipalities that have actually had deaths, you know, attributed to municipal workers. And he mentioned one, the sanitation truck killed somebody somewhere further south in the county. And I said, well, what do they, they have to get insured, right? And he said, well, some of what they do is then they increase the deductible. So our deductible on a general liability claim is ten thousand dollars. You know, he mentioned some of these could go up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, at that point, you you don't really have insurance, right? You're self-insuring up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you're really, that's only catastrophic coverage at this point. So our coverage remains essentially the same. RJ walked me through a few really small differences, they changed the deductible on auto coverage from one thousand to five thousand. That's not a huge deal, but our general liability stays at ten thousand, our property damage stays at twenty five thousand, which is what it was. So, you know, these are the types of things that, you know, you would look at, but I would prefer the protection of this and, you know, RJ said, knock on wood, the twenty-four claims look better than they have in the past three or four years, we haven't had anything catastrophic happen this year.
I agree, it's important that we have the same level coverage.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't see we have much of a choice.
We don't.
No, we really don't, I mean, like I said, I was prepared for an increase based on what had happened. You know, if you look at the prior year, the twenty-two, twenty-three was four hundred and seventy-three thousand and it jumped to seven forty-five and we thought, okay, that was huge. And, you know, I added about another twenty percent on top of that for the budget this year and and here we are, so you know, unfortunate, but if you see the email from RJ and, you know, RJ really has a vested interest other than his business, he's a town resident. So, you know, he's he's really looking for the best deal that he can get for the town and he said he did have a little concern that we weren't gonna be quoted and we would have to go, these are all A-rated insurers and he was afraid we'd have to go to a lesser insurer that, you know, maybe is not backed by the financial reserves that, you know, we're with a company called Munich. We were the company called Zurich last year, Munich was apparently the secondary insurer. We're with Munich this year, so it's a familiar company to the town. So
Yeah, it's expensive, but it sounds like the safer bet, bet based on, based on the circumstances that we can't completely change.
I mean, we wouldn't have liked to have been without insurance with some of these claims that we had and, yeah.
Well, thank you, RJ.
Yeah, he's in the, he's in Portugal, he told me he'd leave a cell phone on in case we needed him, I said,
Okay.
I thought I could handle the disposable allowance, so
Well, RJ, you picked a good time to be out of town.
It's gotta be pretty late.
Thank you.
He certainly enjoys coming to tell us when he's got good news and and
Yeah, well, we'll be happy to see you, RJ, because that'll mean better news, let's hope.
Yeah.
So, you know, on the on the flip side, the other insurance that he handles is our workers' comp and we're in the third year of a three-year price agreement with the workers' comp and it's always expanded in ten or twelve years, so
Right.
So we we get Yeah, for what it's worth to me, from what I've seen, you're you're still kind of like in a in a good spot because I've seen other places where they they have the high deductible, so
Okay.
you know, that's so, again, you're not far off and you're kind of like where other similarly situated munis are, so
Have they gone up as well?
and I probably probably Oh, yeah, and there's there's this
So we're not alone here, I think it's important to say that.
Yeah, we were really good, up up until these single large claims, we hadn't had anything like that in quite a while.
Right, so the penthouse will hopefully swing back.
Yeah, you it went up, but you're still you're still kind of in that wheelhouse there, so again, it is, it's it's unfortunate it went up,
Okay.
but compared to other places I've seen, you're you're still kind of, yeah.
So we're in a in a reasonable ballpark, even though it doesn't doesn't feel good, doesn't sound good.
Yep. Just again, just non- non-insurance guy speaking, but just from the legal standpoint, you guys are still in that ballpark.
It's it's a big number, but it sounds like it's the protection that we need and hopefully, um, don't have to use as much.
Yep.
Yes.
Question though, how, so if we budgeted for only a twenty percent increase, how are we gonna manage the
Well, that's why we have a significant fund balance for such reasons as this and this is a reason why you like to leave a little cushion in the fund balance because there are gonna be unexpected things that happen, you know, I'll even point to like the the highway fund. It's very hard to predict how many snowstorms we're gonna see in a year, right? So we basically average about a ten-year average of what we spend in any year. Well, some years it's gonna be lower and we add to the surplus, some years it's going to be higher and we take from the surplus, so you know, this is an instance. You know, we do have some other positive, strong revenue numbers this year, sales tax is still reasonably strong. Building permits is still reasonably strong. The interest we're getting on the money in the bank is still very strong, as we've seen, the Fed hasn't dropped rates. So there are some positive sides signs to offset some of these expenses, so you know, we haven't, we haven't done a financial update and I I'm gonna look at what's a good meeting. I know we're we're bogged down maybe on the third and the tenth of September, but maybe the seventeenth, so we'll take a look. I'll do another financial update and we'll get, you know, a a half-year kind of estimate. We have some monies that have come in already and and I can better project where we're gonna be.
That'll be great.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
There's another item I want to introduce, this was a last-minute resolution, so I just wanted to explain what that is. It was a request by members of the Conservation Board to sign on as a partner to a new initiative that's called Less Lawn More, the Less Lawn More Life Challenge. And the goal of that is to encourage community members to transition to less lawns in their yards and to promote healthier, more sustainable landscapes in order to mitigate climate change and increase biodiversity. So basically, they would be sharing information about the challenge through their networks and engaging with participants regarding sustainable land management practices through social media and Facebook groups and they would have some lunch and learn webinars. And so it's an initiative for that purpose and they would need our approval to join. So it's not really joining an organization, it's just being part of an initiative, an activity.
There's no cost associated with it?
There's no cost associated, that's right. It's just to amplify and build awareness of the challenge. So we have that on on our consent agenda.
Okay.
Or as an agenda item, rather, a separate agenda item.
Right.
Okay, so that's it for the agenda topics and so we now will go to administrative items.
Sure, quite a load of administrative items tonight. First, we've got a couple retroactive thing of claims, one dated July seventeen and one dated July twenty fifth. We have the adoption of minutes from June and July, the adoption of monthly reports from June, July also. We have the authorization to approve the twenty twenty four NCCMC Web Services Contract. So this is something that slipped through the cracks beginning of the year, a lot going on with Cary and NCCMC. So we have an agreement that doesn't change throughout the years, what changes is kind of the pricing. A lot of those costs are pass-throughs, it's easier for NCCMC to contract and administer stuff and they pass through some of those costs of the town, for example, the Zoom subscriptions and the website civic plus and and some of those items, so those prices change each year and we're just looking for approval for that addendum and we can catch up on some of those payments to NCCMC. We're going to author, looking for authorization to award the bid for the Millwood Park ADA Walkway Improvement Project. So that is part of quite a few renovations that are happening at Millwood Park. We had the lighting put in a couple of years ago at the baseball field. I confirmed with me today supervisor tip that the tennis courts are painted, they are painted, they also include pickleball.
Good.
The only thing that they don't have are are the pickleball nets yet, those are on order, they're coming in.
Okay, that's great.
They're also going to install the backboard
Backboard?
now, which will make Nicole Rocha happy and the Millwood Western Advisory Board.
Oh, good. And I I just wanna add for anyone who saw the tennis courts a few days ago, they were, well, maybe last, up to last week, they were black, so that was just the base coat, that was not the the finished surface of the court. So just just letting you know that they're painted now and looking like tennis courts, right?
Yes, they are, I sent you a picture of them today and they they
All right. All right.
are definitely blue and green like you would expect those tennis courts to look like.
Good, okay.
Looking to approve the twenty twenty four Youth Officer Program Contract. We're soliciting bids for Anthracite and Sand Filter Media for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. We're extending the Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Services Contract with Sandy Pro. So that was a three-year contract with two one-year extensions, so we're now, I think, in the first year of the extensions. And they've got a CPI increase, I believe it was two point seven percent. So that sounds reasonable, I mean, that was built into the contract, there there's a an index that they use to reference that, so we're going to approve that, looking to approve that. Bart is looking to purchase three spreaders for trucks and DPW, those are salt spreaders, getting ready for the winter season. We're looking to utilize the services of the OGS mini-bid to purchase a pickup truck for DPW. We want to award the bid for highway maintenance materials and water maintenance materials. We're looking to solicit bids for our after-school transportation for our rec programs. Unfortunately, due to one of the storms a couple of weeks ago, a large tree or trees fell on the fence up at the nine eleven memorial on that railing. So we have bids to replace that, I think Bob's Fence is is going to do that. I think that was around eight thousand dollars for the repair of that fence and I do believe they'll be able to have that before our nine eleven memorial, if we approve that tonight.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah. We have a couple of change orders for some ongoing projects, the Byram Lake Road culvert replacement, the change to the engineering and an authorization to prove a change order for the parking lot, the some improvements that they're doing with drainage up at the chat pack with the parking lot that they're putting in there, the accessible parking lot. We're gonna declare a police vehicle surplus, I think it was about a twenty sixteen vehicle, it had a whole lot of mileage on it and not of any more use to the police, I think. It had a electrical system that was going bad. We have an authorization for several officers to attend the Juvenile Officers Training School and Resource Officers Conference. Some of our current school resource officers are going to attend this conference. We're looking to approve the contract for Impact Records Management System, this is the police system that they use to record all their incidents and and their waters. So this is kind of been front and center over the last couple of weeks. We're looking to now approve the proposal for the pathimetry, Dennis says it better than than I do, the pathimetry mapping and sediment sampling for Getney Pond. So they actually did go out there and take a look at the material that was there and they're able to give us a better estimate now. What this revised estimate includes is now testing of the sediment that they're gonna remove from the pond. So they do that and provided there's no they don't find any contaminants or anything in that, then I, it should be a simple matter of having it removed by a local company. The company that we engaged for this work was from New Jersey and they suggested we use a local hauler rather than anybody going down from New Jersey and hauling it all the way back there, we'd end up paying significantly more.
And what what's the timing for this?
So that's unfortunately not gonna be until the early spring that we're able to complete this. I think once we engage them, they're able to start the process with the DEC permits that we heard from Dennis are gonna take probably six to eight weeks.
So is the analysis portion of it complete, is that?
No, I think that will be completed this fall and then
Okay, so they just did a very cursory examination and so the actual, right?
They did, yeah, exactly, yeah, they didn't do the inspection where they take the, I don't know if it was the sonar and they
Right, so that's what I meant about the timing, just for the
Yes, correct, yeah, yeah.
Pathimetry mapping, that that would be in the fall, okay.
Uh.
Um, and has the D E C process begun or do they need to do this first?
That hasn't been. No, I think they need to do this first.
Okay.
So I think they anticipate doing this in the fall, that will give us enough time during the winter where they won't be able to do this work. And then in the uh in the spring, as soon as they're able to, they'll get to the work.
Okay.
So, and just an update on that, you know, uh, I think the Parks and Rec Department are are monitoring. You know, we had some fish and and you know, uh that were washed up on shore, so they're kinda taking care of that.
Is is there anything else they can do in the meantime to to clean up the area?
There's not really because it it's the sediment that's in the pond and uh that has to be removed. And we really can't disturb that without uh kinda running a follow-up D E C if they were to find that out.
Okay.
Um, you know, point out if if we see.
But going going forward, yeah, I I just think it's really important to have a maintenance plan.
So we will and 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 Dennis talked about that and and that will be something ongoing.
For the pond, just in general. Yeah.
We'll get a recommendation once the pond is clear from our consultants, what they would recommend. And and I think you heard Dennis say this at the last meeting, that it'll probably involve some herbicides et cetera. Because um, you know, that that's what's gonna be required to kinda keep the um the growth down in the pond. So uh he did mention one of the herbicides is one that are is, I think, approved for use in the watershed type areas, so.
Okay, I mean, I suppose you know it is a originally a wetland.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to keep it a pond. I I just wanna make sure that whatever we use is safe because people go there, kids go there and they go fishing.
Yes.
So I I I just like to make sure that we understand what we're.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the board will be presented with the options once the uh, once a consultant recommends how to move forward.
What we're putting in there.
And and I think that's why Dennis pointed out that the um the herbicide that he thought they would recommend was one that was used. That that is currently in use by different municipalities in the watershed area, so.
Okay, okay, but I I do believe in maintenance plans, I think those are important. Um, they maintain facilities and uh save money in the long run.
Yeah, definitely.
So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, just a couple others, uh authorization for Bart to attend the uh Edwin Tiff Junior Water Supply Symposium. And uh authorization to accept a proposal for the exterior painting of the art center. Um, if you've been up there.
That's nice, oh yeah, yeah.
It needs some renovation, so there's a few other improvements to the art center that are coming. Uh, I think there's the walkway that they're going to redo. And uh, the first one was uh this art center. We had some money in, we had capital project for improvements from years ago for the art center and there was some money left over. So we're gonna use that to paint first and then we'll look at some of the other improvements to determine how we're gonna fund those.
Okay, great, thank you, Rob. Okay, so that does it for the work session, so may I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
Okay.
And to open up the town board meeting.
So moved, second.
Okay, alright, everyone, for those of you just tuning in, welcome to the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four Town Board Meeting. Um, we will start with any announcements that we have, Rob, any announcements? Mark Clerk, nope, okay. Um, I will defer my supervisor's report to the town newsletter, um, Rob, anything to report?
Yeah, just a a couple things, so um, I think a supervisor's tip, I think it was in your um newsletter last week. The road paving is gonna begin this week throughout town. And uh depending on weather, probably carry on for the next couple weeks. I know they're starting tomorrow on Grace Lane and Maria La Maria Lane. And um, you did list in the newsletter all the different roads that they'll be doing. So the town sends out an e-alert each night and each morning uh in the affected areas, just so that uh residents are aware. So uh again, we're we're still a little shy on what we used to have for the old notification system. So if anybody has not yet signed up for the e-alert system, go to the website, please do so. Uh, I know when I sent the alerts out for tomorrow, uh I think there was twenty-six properties on the uh two combined streets that the work's being done on. And I got seven people, so uh.
Could you go over the process for deciding which roads get paved? Because you know, every every year we, and understandably, we get, you know, and I've certainly gotten um communications from certain residents that who are concerned about their own roads and wondering.
Sure.
Um, because you know, roads are not perfect, so people are wondering why their roads are not being paved. And so could you describe how how the determination is made?
Yeah, so each spring, um Bart and and Tom and and public work staff just kinda go out. And uh, you know, after we're done having the freeze and thaw process each year, uh they go out and inspect the roads. And they have a good idea, uh there's kind of a guideline on certain roads depending on how well-traveled they are. If you get, for example, like a cul-de-sac that has very little traffic, that road can probably go twenty-five to thirty years. As opposed to a road that's more heavily traveled and that's probably um five to ten years at most. So uh keeping in mind the useful life kind of of the roads that they have, they go around and and inspect them. And um, you know, they make a determination which roads are are most in need. Um, I will tell you, one other step in the process is they consult with um some of the utilities, Con Ed, et cetera. If there are any um gas mains or buried utilities or anything that they're working on. They don't wanna do any roads where um where Con Ed might come in the next couple of years and tear the road up and the road will have to be restored. So there are some instances when we're aware that Con Ed is gonna put redo some gas mains and you know, we'll wait until those are completed. Um, kind of in the same vein, when we know that we're replacing water mains, uh where we up on where we're up on um, I think Ridge. And I can't remember, there's four roads that they're working on the water mains right now. And uh, so we're gonna obviously repave after we're done with that. But that kind of is uh is a factor too. So we we don't wanna go and repave a road and then come along two or three years later and do some utility work and then have to redo it again.
Sure, yeah.
So um, you know, those are all factors and it's, you know, it it's uh Bart and Tom Skoll. And and uh, you know, they're looking at the condition of all the roads. And you know, we're back in a better cycle, um I'll remind everybody, probably a good ten or twelve years ago. We had years where unfortunately, we didn't pave any road. Um, money wasn't allocated in the budget, we're up to about a million and a half dollars now per year. Which puts us, we were behind for a little bit, million and a half probably puts us on par to probably pave. I don't know, three to maybe seven miles a year, depending on any drainage, any uh reclamation work. Anything that has to be done to rebuild up the roadways. So um, you know, that gets us on, I think, about a hundred five miles. And I I'd need Bart to tell me exactly, but we're over a hundred miles of town road. So um, you know, they do have a general guideline on on how much road they wanna replace each year. And I'll also say, some of the variable there is the state gives us four different buckets of money. Uh, there's CHIPS money, there's uh extreme winter recovery, uh pave our potholes and um, there's one other. And those kinda vary, so we have a a number in the budget and when we find out that we exceed, we're gonna get more money than we had budgeted. We put that back and then we paved a little bit more roadway, so.
Okay, that's great, do we s- do we feel, it doesn't seem that we're far a little bit further behind than other towns because of those years where.
I don't think so, that that was a long time ago and we definitely put a lot more effort into that and and a lot more money.
There were no monies. Right.
It's it's difficult in a tax cap world to go from where you had maybe budgeted a couple hundred thousand to getting up to one point five million. That's not, um, that has to happen incrementally, that can't happen all at once without exceeding the tax cap. So I think we've been able to do that and I I think we are, um, we're we're keeping pace.
Okay, alright, thanks, Rob.
Sure, um, and I just, we had talked earlier, uh, I mentioned some of the improvements at Millwood Park. Uh, and those are uh, those are continuing. And uh, let's see, Getney Pond I had, and um, I don't know if you wanted to mention the sign, the electronic sign.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to point out that the electronic sign, unfortunately, it's uh it's off right now. And the reason that it's off is um, the we're not able to get a signal to the sign. Once the trees grew in the spring, unfortunately, the trees have grown over where we have a transponder that is sending a signal to the electronic sign. So we're working with the school district now and the town's electrician to see what kind of options that we have to move this transponder. So we can get a clear line of sight to the sign, so um, you know, and it.
Right, and the the other option is to cut the trees down and we don't wanna do that.
We don't wanna do that.
So, yeah, we're so we're sorry that the sign is dark and it was displaying incorrect information for a while because the software wasn't working. So it's not that we weren't trying, but um hopefully we'll have this resolved soon so that the sign is back on on time for ta- you know, tax.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, tax reminders and the like in September. Um, okay.
That's all I have?
That's it then, okay then, so now we'll get to a public comment on new business. So I'd like to invite anyone who'd like to make a public comment to come up to the microphone and identify yourself and uh where you live.
Hello, everybody. Well, it doesn't work, I don't blame you, I shut my my mouth too.
Hello.
Hello, everybody, I wanna wish you uh first off a uh a happy summer. And thank you with gratitude for all that was accomplished this summer. Some folks may not know all that the Town Board and uh the uh the independent um uh groups and departments accomplished an amazing amount. And uh, I think uh we're all grateful for Professor Derry for keeping us on budget. And uh, and and moving on. Um, what I, my name first off is uh John Ehrlich, I live at One Apple Tree Close in Chappaqua. And I just wanted to um remind uh those of interest that uh I had proposed a a a directory. So on how how to get things done in town, how to deal things. Sort of like the uh work how to guide to to navigate our uh departments and and ways of 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 get of getting things done. Because departments are running very, very efficiently. And um, you you know, it's um, I don't think you need a permit to to know how things are done. So maybe we can, um, if that is still of interest to this board and uh the other departments. Be delighted to get this this done and published and out. And I think it's enormously important because this community, uh believe it or not. Um, folks at home may not believe it, but it runs amazingly efficiently for uh a local municipality. And so I just wanted to to help out where we can. And uh I thank you very much for doing a great job. And those of you who came today, glad glad to see you again. And uh some people would say I occupy in a teacher as well, but I just wanted to say how much I appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John, appreciate that. Um, anyone online for a public comment?
No hands are raised.
Okay, no hands are raised, so then we will move on. We have a public hearing on the agenda, this is for the Indian Brook Croton Gorge Watershed Protection Overlay District. We are going to adjourn this uh public hearing until September tenth. Uh, we're waiting for the municipalities that are most directly impacted, uh mostly in Austining to um to vote on the watershed district, I think they're doing that today.
And just for that, just for, just to make it clear, I'll just make a motion to adjourn that to September tenth as well, you're all here.
Okay, I I will do that, I'm just explaining.
No problem, yeah, just before I forget to tell you that.
Oh. But thank you very much, though, I want people to understand that we are continuing with um with this overlay district process. But we will just be adjourning the meeting, the the public hearing to September tenth. So may I have a motion to do so?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we will be back be back on September tenth for this public hearing. Um, now I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on uh the Wetlands, Chapter one thirty-seven, Section two. Which is um a consideration for removing the words water and under the definition of material in the Wetlands section. It was mostly for the purpose of of clarity or or for moving uh the consideration of water as a as one of the materials that should not be included in Wetlands. Dennis explained it very well the last time, um, I don't know if he's here for another explanation, I don't think so. Is there anything that anyone would wanna add?
Maybe Dennis. You know, Dennis wrote a a nice memo on the topic, it's included in your packet, but really it makes sense to exclude water and because we are talking about wetlands, so it really wasn't meant to be in there.
Right.
Uh, and the definition of materials, so that's what the local laws are proposing to do tonight, is just really taking those two words out of the definitions.
Right, and these are materials that should not be put uh in a wetlands area, so water.
Correct, correct, and you're exactly.
Didn't make sense there, um, so, okay, so did we, did we do the motion yet?
I think you're, this is the first on tonight, so you didn't motion to open the public.
Right, so may I have a motion to open the public hearing on changing the definition of material in the wetland section?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, anyone for comments on this public hearing? No one in person, um, is there anyone online regarding this public hearing?
No hands are raised.
Okay, so at this time, since it's very non-controversial, there's no one here. I would propose that we um leave the public hearing open for written comments until Friday, this Friday. The sixteenth at noon. And so I would um propose to close the the uh public hearing, okay, may I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so anyone with written comments, please submit them by noon on Friday, the sixteenth. Okay, alright, thank you.
Vicki, I forgot to tell you and I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our ten U baseball team, boys baseball team.
Oh.
There were not enough ten U boys in town to make a whole Newcastle team, so they combined with Croton for the summer. And I'll give you all their names tomorrow to put in the supervisor's report. But my son Aaron was on the team as well as a few other boys and they won the championship in Danbury last weekend and it was really exciting.
Oh. Congratulations, that's great, okay.
So exciting. I know we like happy news, I will send you, I will send.
Send me that information, I would love to congratulate that.
Yes, I know you would.
Okay, it's wonderful news. Uh, okay, so that takes us to our consent agenda, so let's see, let's get started, Holly.
Problem, problem. Alright, I move to adopt items one through twenty-one as listed in the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million one hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail reports in July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail reports dated July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Checks were printed and mailed to E and checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Christopher Frank to the position of Parking Enforcement Officer within the Newcastle Police Department at the annual salary of fifty-one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents. Effective September third, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ali, why don't you think over, how do you switch page by page, you don't get too too tired, it's only the two of you.
I move to authorize the hiring of Zachary McCucci for the position of Part-Time Parking Enforcement Officer within the Newcastle Police Department at the hourly rate of twenty dollars per hour effective August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to accept the retirement of Anthony Rotolo from the position of Detective with the Newcastle Police Department. Effective August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. The town would like to thank Detective Anthony Rotolo for his twenty years of dedicated service.
Second with thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you Detective Rotolo for your service to our town.
I move to authorize provisional promotion of Nicholas Brodigam from the position of Laborer to Water Maintenance Worker Grade Two at the annual salary of seventy-five thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Effective August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, subject to successful completion of a civil cervix exam and is within reach on the established list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to.
I move to authorize the hiring of Riley Carroll to the position of seasonal laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department at the hourly rate of twenty dollars per hour effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals as recreation attendants within the Recreation and Parks Department at the corresponding rates and dates as indicated in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Lucas Abraham, Aiden Foster and Risha Patel for the position of recreation attendance to service camp counselors for the twenty twenty four summer camp at the corresponding rates uh effective June twenty eighth through August ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I move to accept the resignation of Kayle Kalyani Marashimpan as member of the Millwood West End Advisory Board effective March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the appointment of Thomas Harris as a member of the Millwood West End Advisory Board for a two-year term effective September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the appointment of Dina Lawrence as a member of the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee for a two-year term effective September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the appointment of the following individuals as members of the Ethics Board for a three-year term effective September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Evan Glassman, Mark Owens, Karen Sobek and Eric Levine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the reappointment of Joseph D. Giorgio as member of the Architectural Review Board for a three-year term effective September first, twenty twenty four through August thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize and award a bid for the Millwood Park Playground and Tennis Court ADA Access Improvements to S and P Consultants Inc. for the total amount not to exceed two hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the award of bids for each individual item to lowest responsible bidder in each item under DPW twenty twenty four dash O three purchase and installation of highway maintenance materials bid for a one-year period for items not offered a contract extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I could do the last one. I move to authorize the award of bids for each individual item to the lowest responsible bidder in each item under the DPW twenty twenty four dash O four water maintenance materials bid for a one-year period for items not offered a contract extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the Town of Newcastle Conservation Board to partner in the Less Lawn More Life Initiative which aims to encourage community members to transition to less lawn in their yards and promote healthier, more sustainable landscapes that mitigate climate change and increase biodiversity by helping to amplify and build awareness about this challenge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can we I am not seeing the resolution for um for the temporary court clerk.
Oh, true.
Ah.
Hmm, nice call.
And that did it, that did it make, yeah, very good catch.
Good catch, Rob.
She needs to start talking.
So um let's see.
I have the memo, yeah, just
Can I just
Yeah, I think we can just um
It's in the executive section of the man.
Skated, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So hold on, I will just um
Do you have that on a
Yeah, so I would just uh I would just propose a motion. I could propose and you could adopt it. I would just propose a motion to request the authorization to hire Andrea Quittarcio at the as a temporary court clerk to begin on August fourteenth at a rate of pay of two hundred twenty dollars per hour for a period no longer than ninety days. And that's the motion I would make.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, thank you, Rob, for that cap.
Nice statement.
Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Okay, have a good evening, thank you.